I'm going to start the meeting with the flag of allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the very body of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the name of the Constitution.
I'll go ahead and start with the first one, John Scharich.
Here.
Jeff Hamel.
Here.
Your ladies, I'm here. Earl Moore.
Here.
Bridgette Wood.
Here.
So, the first thing on the agenda, I don't have the agenda, I think it's the historic maps, right? Okay. Great, so this is ordinance 2023-6 establishing the Brookfield Downtown Historic District. We had the first reading a couple last week, and then we have the second reading. John, do you want to comment on what happened at the Historic Preservation Commission?
The Historic Preservation Commission met Tuesday night, and a few ladies in the audience and I, too, was also. We discussed for a while, and they decided, in a vote of majority, to build with our map from Third Street to 10th Street on Main Avenue.
Thank you, John. And we also now have official, well, I guess I'll talk about that in a minute. Okay. Sol, this is now therefore be it ordained that the Brookfield Downtown Historic District, as adopted by the Brookfield Historic Preservation Commission, is hereby approved. A copy of the Brookfield Downtown Historic District approved by this ordinance is attached here, too, incorporated herein in the court thereof as exhibit A. This ordinance approving this historic district will shall henceforth be known as the Brookfield Downtown Historic District, is pursuant to authority granted by Indiana Code 36-7-11-7.
So I think that we need to, we had a, the first reading was for the previous map, and then we fabled that to this meeting. I think that we need to hold a vote for the first map on the first ordinance, and then pass the new ordinance, add the first reading, one or two by the end, so it's set with the new map, just to make sure that there's no, there's no issue. Because the first ordinance we have was a full-size map of a larger area. We took that to the vote the last meeting, and said that we all want to be fabled, just in case they can come back with a map that was still the same. So I think that we need to vote no on the first ordinance, and then pass.
Two, two readings of this ordinance, but not.
And suspend the requirements of the two, and then when you do that, it's also we have the end of this consent to do that by force.
I think that'd be okay.
So, Brenda Grease is our attorney from Indianapolis from Rose McKinney. She has come to our meeting to help us figure out legal things. There's a legal thing. Sorry to put you on the spot here. So at our last meeting, we read this ordinance to accept this map, and the map that was drawn, we didn't like. So we did have a first reading, but we then sent back to the Historic Preservation Commission because the map itself is only exhibit A, it's just an attachment. So how would we proceed about just approving this map, which I'm pretty sure is going to pass tonight officially?
Sorry. So did you pass or adopt the ordinance at your last meeting, or was it just the first reading?
It was the first reading.
So I would say at your second week reading, which is tonight, of the same ordinance, the language and the body of the ordinance has not changed.
True.
It's literally just the exhibit A.
Right.
So then I would say exhibit A has been amended, this is an amended ordinance, or it's the same ordinance with an amended exhibit A. So this would be the second reading tonight, and then you could go ahead and take a vote on the second reading. I don't think that it's required, just because you're changing or amending exhibit A, you don't have to go all the way back and start for a first reading and then a second reading in the same meeting.
Great, thank you. So as you said, this is an amended exhibit A, exhibit A, sorry, exhibit A, and we have a trusty map now that once approved, that this will be available to everyone. It goes from Main Street from Third Street to 10th Street. So I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-6 with the amended exhibit A is attached.
First made a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
For a second, all in favor? All opposed, motion passed. And the second item is, I think, Eighth Street?
Yes, Michelle Russell contacted me, I believe, Tuesday. They're having the classic car cruising for Canoe Fest weekend, tomorrow night. I think that they're expecting more cars than originally thought, so they asked if we could close Eighth Street on the east side of Eighth Street. And then they also asked about the parking lot. It's a public parking lot, but she doesn't want to block that off or anything, just asked if they needed to use it, could they protect it?
Which I don't.
That's fine, but they asked if they could close East Eighth Street tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. And I talked to Brandon tonight, he said he would put a barricade out, that it wasn't a big deal.
So that they wouldn't close Franklin then, right?
Correct.
Just access to Franklin, so Franklin will still be open?
Yes, yes.
So it's just a.
Just basically behind, so it's actually on this corner.
And then.
Yes. My question to you.
Thank you. Okay.
But you did say access to the public parking lot.
Yeah, but she wasn't really asking for me to ask permission, she was just saying if they by chance happen to have more people than they originally thought, could they use that for extra parking? And I told her I had this issue with it, it's a public parking lot, but she just also put that in my request, so.
It'll be full.
No.
It'll be full, that's good.
So is there a motion to approve the closure of Eighth Street as described tomorrow night?
Yes, I make that motion.
Chuck made a motion.
To close Z-S Street.
Is there a, is there a second?
Off.
All seconded, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
And the third issue is, before we get to the third issue, what, we had an executive session this evening, and Mr. Grease was able to explain a lot of things that maybe we didn't do completely properly, so what I wanted is for her to explain three things. One is the validity of changing the rules of procedure to include a six-month term for the president, and then also to talk about the vote that we took, and then also to talk about department heads, but I think she can include those department heads extension in the same conversation as the six-month term.
Sure, so the six-month term for an officer on the council, that is not, it's permitted by law, it's not prohibited under law. It is not typical for communities to have six-month terms, it's typical to have a one-year term. And if you, if a community is, or if the council is going to change from a 12-month term to a six-month term, they cannot do it in the middle of a 12-month term. So if they decide to have a six-month term going forward, they could vote on that, and it would not become effective until January 1st, so of 2024. So the officers that were elected in January have a 12-month term in their office for this year, and that's expected that they will serve that out for the 12 months. So the six-month term is not prohibited, but it wouldn't take effect until January if the council decides to limit the terms. Do you want me to go on to the next issue, or?
Yes, so, so one of the things that I asked Brenda is, is there anything that we need to change in the rules of procedure right now? And the answer was no, we can keep what we have, but that new rule about six-month term, we just now know is kind of renouncing, it won't go into effect until January.
Correct, okay. And that's if the rules of procedure remain the same between now and January.
And that, yes, correct. So, and that is also correlates to the vote to.
Sure.
Extend the department heads until 2024.
So also, the, on the department heads, if you're going to extend their term or change their term, that can also not happen in the middle of their term. So if, it's my understanding that in Brookfield, the department head served a 12-month term, so they could be reappointed, or their term can be renewed, but that typically wouldn't happen until like November or December, if the majority of the council is remaining the same in January. If the majority of the council is going to be changing in an election year, then that decision to renew or extend cannot happen until the January meeting, when the new council is in effect. So typically, in the other communities that we work in, when there's like a renewal or an extension of the existing department heads, that's done about the same time that the salary ordinance is approved, which for most communities is done in November or December. So that's what I advised the council during our executive session regarding the department heads and an extension of the current 12-month term.
So again, another announcement is that the department heads that we appointed in January will only serve a 12-month term and end November, December, because much of the board, well, the majority of the board will be in here in January, will take another vote, and will reappoint them at the end of the year along with the salary ordinance. So the next thing was the election, it was that mentioned last week.
So based on my understanding of what happened at the last meeting, there was a new president and vice president who was elected that was going to be him effective July 1st, but because the six-month term cannot apply in the middle of the current officer's term, like that's not valid, so the current officers who are in place, who were elected in January, are still in office.
Yes.
I did advise the council that there are ways to remove current officers, but it has to be done for cause, and we talked about that in the executive session. That is in effect to protect communities around the state, so like if one of the officers isn't showing up for meetings, or isn't, you know, doing their duties as they need to be doing as a council member, there are ways, or an office holder on the council, there are ways to remove officers for cause in the middle of like a 12-month term. So we talked about that, but based on the action that was happening, or that took place at the last meeting, it's my opinion, under the law, that is not valid, so. So the current officers are still in place, but knowing that there are other things that can happen in the middle of the year to make changes, so.
Yes, thank you for letting us know. I had no idea that, that the majority could vote the president out, it's a good, good thing to know, at least for everybody, that if you don't have the majority of your board, the board can vote you out, and that's something that's a good piece of information.
I will say that it has to be for cause, it's like not going to be an arbitrary or pernicious reason, like, because what happens is if you remove a member or an officer, like they could say, hey, I was improperly removed, and there could be a lawsuit, and then the court is going to look, they're not going to say, they're not in the business of deciding whether that reason was valid or not, but it can't be for like something totally arbitrary or pernicious, like it needs to be for cause, like we talked about here in the executive session, so, thank you.
Thank you. So the next, I don't have the revision, sorry, the next thing on the agenda is, Jim, can you read that? I don't have it.
Thank you.
Removal of an officer, the council with cause.
Thank you. Then hand it over to the people that voted last week.
You had a recommendation on the rules of procedure to, that you advised the executive session.
About the rules of procedure?
Correct.
About how I, we talked about how I think that they should be repealed.
Correct.
So.
In its entirety.
In its entirety, right. So I reviewed the rules of procedure for the town of Brookfield, just briefly, and we talked about this, this isn't an agenda item though, so do you want to add this to the agenda?
Would you mind pulling that conversation after the agenda is taken? Thank you. I'm sorry, if anybody didn't hear, I handed it over to the, to the people that voted at the last meeting to discuss this next agenda item.
So based off the advice of the attorney after discussion that she had the project ordinance week, obviously you heard that the, the motion to make last week was floating the terms, which was done as a result to be a referral call for a vote of confidence, and then we were advised that it's impeachment, so we changed that, and advised from the council that was permissible, which is permissible, which may not be advisable. I would make a motion to remove Project A's as President of Brookfield County Council for cause for failure to maintain order meetings, failure to allow elected officials to speak and advocate advancing motions, and general lack of confidence by the majority of the council.
That was motion, you might, I second that motion.
Now it's time for discussion. I'll let John and Earl talk, because I have my own topic points.
After further discussion with attorney's attorney, they verified to me his life and duty, like where we always come back and the investigation, to the court from there, coming back, there is hostile environment, whatever, then we do what we do. Sorry to fall on the table. How, recommend it to table or?
John.
Right, John.
I've been against all of this from the beginning. And I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but one of the things the lawyer talked about was how much time that we've spent on ancillary things and not been in the work for the town.
Yeah.
We have so much work to do for y'all. We have to take care of your money, we have to, we have to do everything for you. It should all be about you, it should not be about us, anything. If we can't get along, we can't get along, but we should go about the business of the town. The town, the president, is not business for the town. It's not helping any of you out there, one iota. Because I've been for the last several weeks, probably every meeting since I was appointed, I'm against this, I'm against the crap. Thank you.
We had a call to table, so based off the attorney's advice in the executive session, which would be.
So it's my, I'd like to make a, at least speak on my own behalf. First of all, I apologize to all the residents and I, for the drama that has happened in this town. I know that a lot of it is because change is hard for a lot of people, and my election has brought a lot of change to the leadership of the town and my role as the president, and I know that it's uncomfortable for people, and I know that some people are intimidated by my approach, but I, I, I have the best interest of the town in heart, and I have been serving my country for so long, it's just part of who I am to continue to serve, and I have no internal or personal financial goals to serve this role. My only goal is to help the town as best I can. I think that I have done that, and if, I mean, I have a list of all the things I've done for the town the past six months, it's pretty long, maybe I'll just save it, but I have done a lot, and I've created a lot of relationships. I think that it's important for the town to have a relationship with the county, and I, I think I almost know every county elected official, and I've spoken to them, probably at least in the past two weeks, maybe, maybe a month, and I don't know if that's something that other town council members have done, is to reach out, to make sure that I know what they're doing and they know what the town is doing. And I personally think I've provided a lot of leadership, and I've talked to the employees, and I've asked them what they're doing and how they're doing, and what the town can do for them, and we have established a good relationship, except for the one, but the majority of employees are very hardworking, wonderful, and exceptional people, and I'm very proud of the job that they do for this town. And I'm glad that I'm able to connect with them during their jobs and in their jobs, because that just tells them how valued they are, at least to me, and that's why I think it's important, because I think the employees are the most important thing that we have here. I guess, and that, last but not least, you know, I have learned a lot, I have, I ask a lot of questions, sometimes that's annoying to some, but that's how I learn, and I've been to a lot of different training events, I've talked to a lot of different other cities and asked how they do things. I have established a very close relationship with Main Street Brookfield, because I think that they are a very important part of our economic development in this town, and they are working hard for that, for us, for all of us. So I think I have proven myself as a president, and I apologize for not knowing the Robert Rules of Orders for exactly how to say, how to stop people from talking, from making illegal motions, and so at one of the council meetings, I did interrupt those that were trying to push a motion of what I thought to be an illegal resolution, because it wasn't reviewed by a lawyer, and yes, I did interrupt, but I wanted to go to the next agenda item, and my ruling was not followed, and so I had to resort to other tactics to try to move on for the business of the town. So that I do say, but I did that as a, as a reaction to an improper resolution. So I hope that the majority of the board does not put me out as president, other than continuing to serve in this role for the people, and I hope that peace finally comes, and the chaos and the drama stops, and we start to work together for the town. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Bridgette. Every one of us up here are an elected official, we were elected, invited, and voted to represent town, in this town, and to do what's best for what we think is good for the town. And it's just because someone doesn't agree with me, does not give them the right to shut me up. What's that mean?
Doesn't give you that idea.
I don't shut people up, okay?
Okay, so that's, because you know I'm here.
Hey, you got one, give us another four. I, I am for, I am in Brookfield, I think we all are, and are in ways up there. Just because we disagree with something, doesn't mean we have to go to Facebook and go to name-calling. I think that's pretty childish and immature. We should be able to handle the things ourselves, and if we disagree, we disagree. It's a three-to-two, or four-to-one, but whatever it is, but let's accept it, move on with it, not get mad, and override someone with the sound of their banging gavel telling me that I'm out of board.
Is there any more discussion?
You know, I see you sit there in my half, and it's kind of funny, because I remember several weeks back, you had made a post, and it really was regarding something that happened during the meeting, and you said that if Bridgette wanted it to be settled and handled over a cup of coffee. She was saying that to someone else, and you piped him and spoke, and said, you think it's more serious, that it needs to be handled in public, not over a cup of coffee. I asked you about that a couple weeks back, three, four, three meetings back, maybe. I was interrupted by Bridgette, you were interrupted, and you went to answer by Bridgette. And I still to this day don't know why you have flipped this way, flip sides. It's your, it's your fault, the flip sides, that's what I'm saying. It all should be adults. If we don't agree, we don't agree. But we don't.
Are you not doing?
I'm talking to everyone.
I just want to ask.
John, are you present? Hmm? Are you present?
Sure.
There was a motion to second, and then a motion to table, and then based off the advice.
There wasn't a motion to table, Mr. Ward.
Earl recommended the table.
No, he didn't.
He recommended.
No, he didn't, Curtis, thank you for your input.
And I would, I would rescind my motion based off of Earl's recommendation of table, which was consistent with the advice of the executive session, that there are valid reasons to table a motion, that during a session it can be voiced and then can be rescinded. Is that your understanding, Earl?
Yes.
Okay. So I rescind the motion, we'll wait till after the results of the investigation, we should proceed as an executive session, have a chance to discuss, and then they bring it up to a later date.
My opinion, though, the investigation has nothing to do with what we're talking about right now.
What?
The investigation.
Yeah, the whole one.
Investigation is over a hostile work environment. The removal is for a lack of confidence, from what I understood.
Now, the May 4 meeting, you said I created a hostile work environment, and then you said, let's change the rules. That's, yeah, you did.
All right, I repeal my, I made a motion to repeal a motion.
Rescind it.
Or rescind a motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Discussion.
And we rescind it. It's rescinded, it's rescinded, we're done, thank you. The public is here, it's time for public comment, that's all we had on our agenda.
So I'd like to add, in my consent, and I would add the rules of procedure based off the advice of council in the executive session to the agenda.
Can I weigh in?
Yes.
So if you want to add an agenda item, that's fine, the rest of the council can approve the addition of the agenda item, or if you're going to call for additional business, that would be for a great time. It is not, if you're going to have public comments, I would also add that to the agenda. It wasn't advertised as a public meeting. Do you typically have public, like a, a public hearing, it's not a public hearing? We usually, at the end, okay, that's fine, that's fine. If you're going to add more agenda items, I have everybody approve that addition, and then we can talk about the rules of procedure, if you want to talk about that tonight, or if you don't, you can add that to the next.
I made a motion to add that to the agenda, so we can carry on with the term of precedent.
No, sir.
What's the discussion? I mean, I thought of the discussion.
I was just adding to the agenda, she has advised us during the executive session, I will see her, she wants to.
Yes, sorry, all in favor of adding the rules of procedure to the agenda?
All in favor.
All opposed? Motion passed, given to, rules are added to the agenda. Would you like to make a motion about the rules of agenda, rules of procedure?
Would you like to explain, just so all council members are clear, so your recommendation for the rules of procedure was to abolish them in its entirety?
To repeal. So I reviewed your rules of procedure, and with the exception of just a couple of things, like that six-month term that was added, and then there's a specific provision in there about the addition of agenda ordinance, literally everything else already follows what's required by Indiana Code. So in my opinion, like, it's not necessary to have a separate rules of procedure for the town of Brookfield, because it just creates another distraction to talk about during the council meetings, it allows council members to use several against each other, saying, hey, you didn't follow the rules. So typically, in other communities that we work in, we don't advise that they have separate rules of procedure, and after reviewing the ones that are already in place, with the exception of those two items that I already mentioned, it's not anything that's different than what's already required by Indiana Code. So I advised the council during the executive session that they should consider repealing them in its entirety, just to remove that item from future discussion and distraction for the council.
Thank you.
I made a motion to repeal the rules of procedure in its entirety. I made a motion to repeal the rules of procedure in its entirety.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Is there any discussion? John? No? Earl? All in favor? All opposed? The rules of procedure are announced. Is there any more business to come before the board, before I call for public comment? There's a, now's the time to call a comment, if anyone would like to come up to the podium.
Please, I'm about to call for it.
Please, please announce your name, and you have, and you have two minutes.
Okay. My husband calls, the memory golf course, and there are, we need to know this is the town's chief of golf course. There are some golf carts that can't make up that one ravine. And there've been two accidents where they come down and hit a tree. The guys didn't get hurt, they just got jungle wrecked. But my husband says when they have a tournament, a lot of people, they use all of the stuff, and somebody can maintain it when there's a liability issue, and he just wanted me to, to let you know.
Yes, the, uh-
I didn't know if you knew.
We did. The golf course has, has informed us, and we are, we are working with an engineer to come up with a, a plan to make that, that steep hill not as steep. So we have engaged him. I, I don't know if we've signed a second task order yet, no. But we have asked him to look at it. So we've got his, his in the works to get hold, let him fix. But thank you for your-
I'm on the back of the machine right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else with comments? Please state your name, and you have two minutes.
Paul Cheney. I understand that what's going on here was with the hostile work environment that was brought up by one employee. Is that correct?
Um, the investigation hasn't been concluded yet, so we haven't gotten our, our summary from the investigator, so.
Have you done the survey for the, with the employees?
Earl?
I gave them to the attorney tonight.
You did what?
I handed them to the attorney tonight.
You gave them to the attorney. When will we know the results of that?
Yeah, I know. They were still sealed when I handed them. They're, they're going to take it back to the office and review them. Let us know at their time.
So five, five surveys were returned.
Okay. Thank you.
My name's Carol Sizer, and the hostile work environment is what you were about, you were right.
I can't stand up.
I said the hostile work environment is, that's what you're holding on to, correct?
But that's what the investigation is about, okay, Mr. Ward?
I've been to these meetings for the last, I think, three or four months. Last week, there was a hostile environment in here when two people were yelled at. Literally, the public was yelled at. I even remember, okay, that's hostile, no matter how you look at it. So, no, it's my two minutes. Okay? At what point is other people accountable for their actions? Curtis, there was a time when everybody was fighting up here. And Veronica, you said, could everybody keep going on with the meeting? And you said, and you were correct, you were right. You don't have to stay here. You can get up and you can leave anytime you want. That's, it was correct, but it's rude. We're the people. We pay the salaries. We're limited on what we can say. But yet you guys argue. This has been a hostile environment, but she's not the only one that's doing it. They have to be accountable. It's not just her. Let the people vote to see who's been hostile.
I, I think I do need to dress up. There was a man sitting in the front row last meeting, and just out of the blue, he looked at me and pointed and said, you're a fool. So I, I don't know if you guys know, but an elected official, it's, it's illegal to harass or intimidate an elected official.
They call a girl a fool when you are one.
So you're-
Okay. So, so if we can, if we could possibly, if we could possibly, that's why I asked, Chuck, if you could, if everybody could just please be professional with your comments. I, I don't, it's important to me that the community gets to speak, but it's, it's also important to maintain your professionalism during this meeting.
Yes, please, please. Maintain a professionalism. I was reacting, I looked at you and said, you're a fool. You sounded blue.
If, if you're finished, Chuck, I'll, I'll accept a motion to dismiss. Curtis made-
I'm not finished. I'm, I'm just getting ready to myself. A man sits here, calls me a fool, out of the blue. I have no idea why. And then some lady standing back there, I think, I seen her, heard her. She starts calling, yelling at me, telling me to shut up.
I think maybe, Chuck, if you want to address this-
So that's fine, but I'm not the one being hostile. I'm the one that was attacked.
If there's, if there's, Chuck, if I could ask if you could possibly just discuss this with the public actor?
I'm willing to get that out.
If, if there's any way you can discuss with the public actor in the meeting, so we can just finish with the business part of the town.
Then we'll finish.
Curtis made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I second.
They're all seconded? All in favor? All opposed? John? Favor or opposed?
I just, oh, for, I just want to thank everybody for coming out. I really appreciate it. It's summer, and it's a nice evening, and you took time out of your lives to come here. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, sir.